Chairman Platt.
Hi Chairman.
Chairman.
We nicely done. Thank you very much for leading that executive session that was brilliant. And I kept getting messages as I was driving from saying that I could not unmute myself without the administrator's approval. So Kathy, I don't know if you saw me, but after a half dozen or a dozen times I stopped trying to. So, but that was so well done. There was absolutely no need. And given given that I am here switching from cell to laptop. Bob, would you be so kind to open the public hearing while I'm still pulling up agenda items?
So with regard to tonight's meetings, we have several matters on agenda. The first one on behalf of the applicant regarding a home occupation special permit for plumbing and heating business applicant. Matthew will reading or read and excuse me for the property located at 28 Hollywood Terrace. Specifically, Mr. Redden is applying for a home occupation special permit to run his plumbing and heating business at his address, which is again 28 Hollywood Terrace, North Reading, Mass. Map seven parcel one pursuant to article 20 dash 42 of the North Reading zoning bylaws is Mr. Redden. In attendance.
Ah, yes, I'm here.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Redden. If you might be so kind as to um let the board and the uh, public viewing public uh, make some a statement regarding your application.
Uh, so I'm opening up plumbing and heating business and I want to run an office out of the home at 28 Hollywood Terrace. That's that's basically it.
Okay. Uh, pursuant to this, I would take note that Community Planning Commission on March 2nd submitted to the board uh, the following statement, the planning commission does not object to the application provided soon to the position provisions of 200 dash 42 hockey bait home occupation uh, and as adhered to. So Mr. Redden, um, with specific regard to the um the use of the property, um, can you give a little bit more insight as to what's going to go on at 28 Hollywood Terrace? Um, just only because as our almost as under our purview in our our obligation, we're trying to make considerations be our interest. Uh, but at the at the same understanding of what impact it will have on the community in which 28 Hollywood Terrace, uh, that activity is located.
So, uh, I have one truck I park on the driveway, work van. And then everything, all tools and everything are stored in the van. So there's nothing outside or anything. Uh, all the office work will be done inside the house in an office.
And how long has the business been in? How how long have you had the business ongoing?
About six weeks.
Okay. How many employees or is it is it a solo?
Is a sole proprietorship.
And is there any plan in the immediate once you do really get it going to bring somebody on or is that just uh, too early in the uh in your business plan?
Um, there's currently no plan to do that. As of right now.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, just in any of your business, um, do you have any customers, uh, clients coming to your house?
No, no, never.
And is it just the single van that you um, you employ?
Uh, yes, just one van.
Is there uh any other questions from the uh board with regard to uh the application at this time? Is there anybody from the public? Uh, any neighboring properties? Have we heard from anybody? Kathy, if if you might know since the time of the the application filing.
I don't believe I've gotten any any butter letters on there.
Uh, Mr. Redden, would there be any signage on the house or is it just going to be the van?
Uh, just a van.
Often we get asked about um uh, supply deliveries. Are you, do you basically go to the supply houses to pick up all your stock and inventory?
Yes.
So is there any expectation, anything special delivery for purposes, you know, whether you're going to get an increase in in delivery trucks of any kind, or is it all uh, just done by you directly?
No, it's all done by me directly. And if something's ordered, it goes directly to a job site.
Um, Ms. Platt.
Mr. Brain, is the applicant aware of our standard conditions? Primarily being that no one other than the applicant is in employed in business that you're limited to 300 square feet of space for the in-house use. There's no external storage of supplies or equipment. And no signage other than what, of course, you could have on your truck.
Okay.
All right. The special permits, if granted, run with the applicant. So if you move someplace, uh, we do this again. Um, or if you sell your business, they do that again, but otherwise it would run with you.
Okay, sounds good.
All right. I have no further questions.
Thank you, Jim, Ms. Platt. Kathy?
Um, there is one other thing. It's good for four years. So in four years, you may get a letter from the town clerk asking you if you want to renew that.
Okay.
All right, I'm gonna close the um the hearing. If anybody would like to make a motion regarding uh, the application for special permit.
Will we get a second on the call?
Oh, sorry. Can you get a second on the closing of the the uh of the hearing?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Uh, would anybody like to make a motion regarding the application?
Leave that to one of you. Motion in favor Maria Lockhart. So you may but um sort of if I think Kathy was good enough to send us draft.
For that purpose, um, I'd like to move that pursuant to the application that a special permit for the use of the home location located 28 Hollywood Terrace in North Reading. Uh, be permitted for purposes of the occupation for plumbing and heating business pursuant to article 200 dash 42 of our bylaws. Attended to that, uh, the uh restrictions that I know other person other than the residential occupancy shall be employed therein or the uh, no more than 300 square feet shall be devoted to such use. If you know, display of goods, wires, wares or signs related to the home occupation. Visible from the exterior. The permit shall run with the applicant and is no way transferable. There'll be no customers coming to the premises. And this permit shall be valid for four years. Um, also to be noted that um only the single vehicle that was um discussed in the um in the applicant applicants um conversation will be um will be able to be located on the premises.
I'll second the motion.
Noted. Call the vote. All in favor?
Ben Regucci, I.
Maria Lockhart, I.
Bob Green, I. So Mr. Redden, um, with the grant of the um uh, the variance in the special permit. Is it 20, uh, how many days um appeal? By
20 days.
20 days.
20 days. Thank you.
And after expiration of 20 days, then you can Kathy, remind me again, does he need to come in and pick up his special permit or will those be mailed out from the town clerk?
I will send out um a copy of the decision after the 20 day appeal period, you'll come down and get the certified copy from the town clerk that needs to be recorded.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Redden. Uh, good luck with your business plan.
You will.
Moving on into the agenda. Regarding the matter of 40 Abbott Road, again, North Reading. Is the applicant uh, here?
Uh, yes, I am here.
Mr. Reedy.
Yes, I I am here.
Jump into that. Green, would you read the public hearing notice? We open that hearing.
So for purposes of 40 Abbott Road, the applicant Brian Reedy is asking for a home occupation permit to run his food truck catering business out of his office, out of his home at 40 Abbott Road, North Reading. After team parcel 24 pursuant to article 200 dash 42 of the North Reading zoning bylaws. Mr. Reedy is here. Uh, Mr. Reedy, if you might take a moment to um uh, tell the board and the viewing public about your application for this permit.
So what we're trying to do is just establish a home office at my house. The food truck itself, we have a parking spot for it may periodically be on the property. Um, I like to do some work on it. Uh, maintenance, stuff like that. Uh, we have a commissary that we use that can store all our food, wastewater. Uh, we can get our water from from the commissary and store inventory there as well. Um, so there wouldn't be any actual, uh, other than the office uh, and the occasional truck. Uh, there wouldn't be anything else other than that. That regarding uh, our business on our property.
What kind of food truck?
So it's a, we sell sandwiches in Boston. Uh, we have a uh we have a program in Boston that we are partners with that uh we're gonna be in uh, three days a week and it's American style sandwiches uh, for breakfast and lunch and um so, you know, we do uh, we do, we we change up our menu a lot, but uh we try to do uh, classic favorites. Um, that, you know, everybody kind of loves uh, such as like spicy chicken sandwich that is that we have it. It's very popular. Um, we have pastrami and all this stuff is purchased from uh, a wholesale supplier. Um, none of it's made at our house or you know, we don't again, keep any of the food there. But we are looking to have an established uh, being able to register the business um, to our property.
How long have you had the business going?
Uh, since 2016. Um, we started off, uh, we have one truck. Um, and it's kind of grown. We we were in great, we were in Chelmsford for a while and um we've just kind of grown and we're trying to get kind of more, we're trying to grow a little bit, scale up, uh, get more customers, obviously, uh, increase revenue. Um, and Boston's a great place to do that. And uh, it's really hard for us to be able to commute uh, from Chelmsford to Boston every day. But we, again, uh, that's that's, we're just trying to get it a little bit closer to the city for the days that we are working there.
Any other? So um, I might ask, um, so the only, so what you're saying is the only time the truck will be on premises at Abbott Road would be for maintenance or is it gonna be kind of?
So we, our commissary in Woburn is on the way into Boston and they open really early in the morning. So uh, it's easy for us to get to the commissary um, from our house in North Reading, uh, and then to Boston. Uh, on the three days a week that we're working in Boston. Uh, we also do a lot of corporate catering inside the city. And a lot of it's booked uh, weeks, months in advance. Um, so the days that we're not working, it probably wouldn't be there, but the days that we are working, it may be there.
So in theory, all right, if that plan follows, the truck will be in on Abbott, three days a week. It parked for the start of the day, end of the day, into the next day. And on the the other four non Boston days or when you're not making the stop at the commissary, it'll be located at a, an alternate parking location.
We do have an alternate parking location uh, in Chelmsford for when we do other, uh, like again, we do a lot of corporate catering. So it's pretty much across the board uh, throughout Massachusetts. We travel everywhere. Um, so it's gonna be on the days that it uh, is convenient for us to have there. It's just gonna, you know, it's just, it kind of is a fluid um, calendar or scheduling that we use. Uh, because a lot, again, a lot of this stuff comes in weeks or months in advance. So what we have planned for concrete is the Boston um route or the Boston locations. But there's gonna be other things that come up where we're gonna maybe need the truck there. Uh, and then there's gonna be days that we don't need the truck there. Um, and so that's just kind of, it's 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 a fluid kind of process that that we go through with the truck.
And we don't have Inspector Noel on the call, I don't believe. And
I did speak with him, uh, and I think he he's, he gave me the green light uh, from the Board of Health, right?
Um, actually, I was thinking from, yeah, there's sort of two questions where there are a couple of questions there. One is food prep, which if if it's not being done at the home, it's being done at the commissary in Woburn. That takes it out of our jurisdiction. The parking of the vehicle, the commercial vehicle to one ton is permitted on premises. And I don't know how big your food truck is, but if it exceeds that that could be the issue in a, in a residential zone, the part not the, not conducting your the home occupation part portion, the record keeping that part, that's not an issue.
No, so it's, so I guess, Mr. Reedy, how big is the truck?
Uh, I don't have an exact weight on it, uh, but it is a larger vehicle. Um, I could get back to you on the actual weight. But but it is a little bit bigger than a normal size um, pickup truck.
Okay, um, then it does, are we talking, uh, I know this is kind of suspect. So you know what a UPS truck or the, uh, you know?
You might compare it to a UPS truck, yes.
Does anybody know how much, um, what scale aside that um falls into for tonnage? I don't. So I'm, I'm throwing that out as a general question, anybody?
So one way to sort of to kind of work around that issue is you could, and I'll leave it to you three to 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 make the motion and vote on this. But approve the the home occupancy portion of it and then say any parking is subject to town regulation. So if it falls within the the allowance and I have no issue with it. Um, if it doesn't, then that would
We could, we could, yeah, if it doesn't, we can find another location.
And I I hear you that you're sort of on the way and Woburn's a easy, easy stop on the way into to Boston, but uh, the concept here is to have these home ox be essentially invisible to your neighbors so that they don't know that there's any business going on in residential neighborhood. And as long, and everyone's allowed to have one work truck. I believe it's the one ton limit and I just haven't pulled up the code, the regulation quickly enough, but whatever it is. You're welcome to have.
Thank you.
By the way, uh, any deliveries being made to the property? Is everything go through the commissary?
Everything goes through the commissary. Yeah, we don't have any signage or there won't be any deliveries um, for anything regarding our business.
Any other questions from the board? Um, any, uh, I know there were some, um I know there was a message sent in, well, for purposes of the record, I'll note this. From Community Planning Commission dated March 2nd. Uh, in response to comment regarding 40 Abbott Road. Community planning took note that it does not object to the application provided the provisions of 200 dash 42 are adhered to. Further. This was submitted uh, to the attention of Ms. Morgan's office. Specifically from Megan Goddard. Writing in support of Brian Reedy at 40 Abbott, I am a neighbor at 46 Abbott Road and I have been made aware of his business moving to his home address. I have no issues with this. And I fully support it. Please let me know if you need anything else. Thank you. Acknowledged. Uh, Megan got it. Uh, that should be noted as being part of the record uh, for today's hearing.
So why is there another one, Bob?
Uh, please, Kathy, uh, Miss Kathy, I'm trying, uh I thought there was another one, but I don't have it in front of me.
And it was from Doug Richards and his mother. Good afternoon, Kathy. We see more follow up with the letter received in mail to our address at Nine Junction Road, North Reading. We got an special permit to run a catering business office out of their home at 40 Abbott Road. We, Doug and Pat Richards have no problem with granting them with approval. Thank you for your time, Doug and Pat.
Uh, thank you, Kathy, for that assist. Uh, I don't think there's any other, uh, is there any other, um, any other um public comment from uh, neighbors of Butters, uh, anybody in the general area um, regarding this matter? If there isn't, um uh, I'd like to move to um, close the public hearing. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Regucci. Uh, does anybody want to make a motion regarding uh, the application submitted regarding the use of 40 Abbott Road for um, special permit for home occupation?
Yeah, I'll move uh, favorable action on a special permit to Brian Reedy, 40 Abbott Road, North Reading, map 27. Parcel 47 for a special permit for home occupation for his food truck and catering business per article 200 dash 42 of the North Reading zoning bylaws. Uh, special permit shall contain the following mandatory conditions. No person other than the residential occupant shall be employed therein. No more than 300 square feet should be devoted to the use of the home office. Should be no display of goods, wares, signs related to the home occupation visible from the exterior. Uh, special permit for home occupation runs with the applicant and is in no way transferable. Uh, there'll be no customers coming to the premise. And that the special permit shall be valid for four years. And I'm, I'm also at at the chair, uh, at her suggestion. That the vehicle is in compliance with the residential zoning uh, restrictions.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Regucci. Do I have a second on his motion?
And Maria Lockhart's second, Mr. Regucci's motion.
Thank you, Ms. Lockhart. At this time, I call the matter to a vote. All in favor?
Ben Regucci, I.
Maria Lockhart, I.
Bob Green, I. Motion passes. Thank you, board members. Uh, so as just noted in the um, in the uh motion brought by Mr. Regucci, uh, Mr. Reedy. You will be receiving is a 20 day appeal process for the public for purposes of the the grant. Um, after that period of time, uh, you'll be able to get a copy of the permit and um, and at town hall and um you should be all set. But again, um I I think there'll be a follow up. We'll bring it to the attention of uh of the town inspector for purposes of confirming that the um the truck is falls within um, acceptable guidelines under uh, North Reading town law bylaws. Okay. Great. Congratulations. Thank you for taking the time and making the uh, the application to the town for um, the purposes of the home office.
Thank you to the board.
Best of luck with your business.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Have a good evening. Thanks.
You too.
Returning to the agenda for tonight's meeting. Regarding the matter of 11 Kings Row, uh, North Reading. Variance for a three car garage. Pursuant to the hearing notice on the petition of Christopher Bond of 11 Kings Road, North Reading, map 66 parcel 16 for a variance in the side setback for construction of a three car garage according to the requirements outlined in the Dimensional and Density Regulations in the North Reading zoning bylaws. Is um, is Mr. Bond in attendance tonight?
It's Renee Bond, his wife.
Oh.
Can you hear me?
Good evening. Yes, I can.
Good evening.
So, um, this bond, if you might um, be so kind as to um enlighten us with regard to your application.
Yes, definitely. So currently we have um, just about a 20 foot with um, wide garage. Um, so it's kind of like a single bay. We can only fit one of our vehicles in there currently. And so the goal is to be able to accommodate our growing family. So we wanted to expand on the garage so we can fit our larger. Right now, we have, we've got a larger SUV, but we will soon need a van. So to be able to fit all the vehicles and in addition to that, the, you know, snow blower and some of the kids' toys and stuff, we wanted to be able to expand on the garage. Which I believe our our current setback, it's it's 25 feet and um what we would be needing, it's it's, it would be 20.1 feet would be left with. So we'd be requesting 4.9 additional feet.
Okay. So I know that the plans were submitted.
Yes.
Purposes. Uh, do you want to um make note of any of of the drawings or um in particular that uh
Uh, with
group has
So with regard to the renderings, what we were thinking was um, in addition to the expansion of the garage, we were going to utilize some of that space um, to expand on the mudroom. That's right there on the other side of the door inside the garage. Um so that was what we were kind of thinking. And obviously, in doing the expansion of the garage, it's gonna alter the exterior um, a little bit. You know, the roof line there. And we did speak to um, the surrounding neighbors, so um, to the left of us, Tim and Tia Smith, who would directly affect. Um, and then La Coco's on the other side and then our neighbors both across the street. And then La Coco's on the other side and then our neighbors both across the street who are all in support of our, our project.
Bob, can you see the map?
I've got a copy of the. The town map and I'm looking at the photos that are on screen which show the current.
This is the home. Alright, and this is the proposed.
Proposed and how it will. Obviously alter. I think what's. What's? I'm trying to just look back to the previous drawer, previous map, a plan which showed the, the outline in regard to. The property lines as well as. The existing layout of the, the entire property grounds. And I know that. I don't want to get ahead of it. So. But with regard to the. The planned project. I might ask at this time if there's any, does anybody from the board have any questions with regard to? Mrs. Bond's presentation?
Kathy, do we have a note from the building inspector on this?
Um, he submitted some pictures and he's wondering about this shed. And how far away from the property line is it?
Okay, so without jumping ahead on the shed, I, just the moment. I want to be able to keep. The garage construction as the point of the focus within the hearing matter tonight. But again, you're looking at. The need for the. The setback from the. From the property line. And.
20.1 at the closest spot.
That's right. Thank you. I would take note that. Within their request for comment, the. Planning Commission replied on March 2nd again, questioned what the hardship would be for this request. And I think that does speak to the, the overall guideline that. Our board is often tasked with, with regard to this. And while I. Usually will appreciate brevity in a, a public document, I'm, my, I would only almost have to. Make a guess as to what they're, they're questioning and it's an interesting one that has to be raised here for purposes of. Granting a variance, which is. The simple desire to just increase the space for purposes of this particular type of vehicle. Unless somebody from the board has a thought to that regard as well. Because it is going to substantially change the outline, the layout of your home, which is obviously within your purview. But again. And while it may not, the neighbor, the neighborhood is, is well. Spaced and I don't think it's, it doesn't appear that there's any input from objections that we've received from. Neighbors or from the neighborhood itself. The point should be noted that was made by community planning just for purposes of. This hearing. Again, to the board itself, is there anybody, is there any, any further thought or question before we? Address the question of the shed location, which is not within the, the application tonight?
Yeah, there's a number of elevations. In the package, you may want to, Kathy, if you scroll down to the board and member. Is participating has the benefit of looking at, I think that's, that's the new proposed exterior from the back. That's the front on the right hand side. With the three, three garage base and then residential above.
So Miss, has there been any topographical? Examination or engineering input with regard to how? This extension out from your existing property is going to. Change.
Other than the drawings. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
So other than, other than the drawings, there hasn't been any, any further?
No. It's just, this has just been the, the basis of it, just these drawings here.
I'm looking at the, the layout. I think that's the next screen, Kathy. On the floor plan. So for the. Addition here on the second floor. Is it, what are? The bottom, bottom right is a proposed second floor addition. And it looks like we're adding. That adding four, five rooms. It plus what, it looks like one is technically a bedroom with a closet. And the other, others are technically not without closets. So what does?
No, as of right, as of right now, it's just all, we just have it all stored. We haven't. Talked about anything like that yet. Right now it was just, the focus is on the garage and the mudroom, expanding on the mudroom that was right there. Given the cost of everything. It was just going to, we were going to use some of that garage space for the mudroom. Right now it's, it's extremely tight. And so we're just going to expand on that and, and then, and then the rest of it would be the garage to put the, the larger, hopefully be able to put more than one vehicle in there.
So it's the, the thought on the upstairs with the current layout, whether that may not be the, the ultimate. Design. But the question I had, had is if your, if this will increase bedroom count, will the existing septic be sufficient?
Oh, right. Yeah. No, no, I do, I do understand, understand all that. No, we have a, we have a four bedroom septic. They put it in, White Rinnme bought the house, but right now this is just solely on the, on the garage and the, in the mudroom.
But if it's in front of us and you're presenting planning for the two story addition, we have to look at both.
Oh, of course, of course.
And are there, is it currently four bedrooms in the house?
It's three bedrooms.
Okay, so you can add one if you already have a four bedroom septic.
Yeah.
I just don't want you to, if, if part of your plan is to get this, get this. Obviously you want to get the whole thing approved. And if you go back to, if you put. If you put closets in any of these other rooms upstairs. You would either have to have your, you would have to have the septic review to make sure it's sufficient. Otherwise. You won't be able to get your building permits or if you get your building permits and there are bedrooms when you go to sell, that's going to.
Of course. This is our forever home, so.
Some point.
I don't want to pack up again.
Some point it will be transferred, but yes, that just, it's more, it's more for your, for you to know. That would be a sticking point.
Yeah, of course.
Even if you got a financing on it in the future and they did an appraisal and inspection, it would.
Of course.
So we've seen those get, people get caught on those. So just.
Sure. Yeah, definitely.
And one of the reasons I brought up the topography, if there's been any, I know you're going to expand the, is it the asphalt driveway? And it looks like a walkway might be, or will be left around the side of the new construction.
Yes.
So that. So you're at, is it, you're at 11. I'm just wondering if nine understands that. There'll be a change in, there might be a change in water flow because right now you've just got grass absorbing water and suddenly it could just flow onto his property. And that's why I'm asking if there's been any, I can't discern from the, the drawings. I know from the, the photo how it looks and lays out. But I don't want, I, I don't think. We'd want to. To be without giving some concern for that as, while it might seem is not much of anything it could be and. Especially with the proximity, since you're drawing the proposed to the, the property line with that. I'm assuming that fence might be the marking, the, the fence that runs between yours and.
Yeah.
Is it, is it nine? Is that the actual property line?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I mean.
Where are you with your, with your development team other than the activities, the rent, the, the drawings and the?
This is really is where, this is the early stages. This is where we ended up. We're trying to see, you know, how everything goes here to before we move forward. I didn't want to get too involved before having this answer. And then we'll obviously, because we'll have to change things if, if we couldn't add those additional five feet, then we would alter the exterior bit. It would go down to a two car and it would be, it would just, it would change the, the exterior. So I want to, we want to wait till this point first and then we'll get right into it.
I might refer to. This plat because longer standing experience with the board activities, but. Is there any merit for? Giving that further investigation or consideration with regard to this specific application?
The, you know, all good questions. It looks like from the aerial view I have of this, or aerial shot, we have the existing asphalt goes. Is as shown on that plan, the by two minutes driveway already exists. So if they are keeping that the same. We'll see that much of a change in water flow to your, to your question on impact on the neighbors.
Well, when they, when there's a, below the photo, there was a image Kathy, you might be able to draw it up. Please, where there's an existing photograph. Of the, of 11 as it exists now. And then below it is a, it looks like an architectural or a drawing, rendering. And it looks as if the asphalt driveway is expanded out and even on the. I'm sorry. The layout plan which shows the existing garage to be removed, you can see an expansion across the entire length of the new construction. Of the, of the driveway. I know the photo was up earlier. I don't think it was in our packet. I've actually, it was. But it again, and it was computer, assuming it's computer generated. So that. All right. Well, this is interesting because that's the existing space. Right. So I, it doesn't, I might, it might, this might address the question because it looks as if that asphalt is already in place.
To the applicant is the, and, and I know your, your question is going towards, or one of the questions is going towards water runoff. Is the intention to expand on the asphalt on the impervious surface or is that remaining as is?
No, it's going to be, it's going to be ripped up.
It's actually going to be lowered. It's a.
It's actually going to be lowered. It's a little bit higher than it should be.
So with the new plan, I don't think we're going to do asphalt on the side of the house.
We're not going to be doing asphalt on the side of the house. Just like a paper path. Does that make sense?
But that's so along the, we're going to see the, would see the, the house and the garage extend out to the right. And then for the, the buffer along the right hand side of the garage, it would be a paper path rather than the existing asphalt and.
With landscaping.
Yeah, correct. There'll be a very small basketball court at that point. Yeah, that'll have to go.
And I think, did I miss it in the, in, in the materials, Kathy? Did we have anything written? Letters of support from neighbors or?
I don't believe I got anything from.
Yeah, there should be four attached.
Oh, hold on. Did you send them to me?
My husband went in and, oh, they're all uploaded. I think Kathy, you had uploaded them for him. Or you did? My husband did. Yeah, yeah.
You're going to the filing. Hold on.
With the plot plan and everything.
Moments from CPC. I don't see any guarantee in this application.
They were uploaded along with the plot plan in the same.
Oh, okay.
In the same folder? I see variance supports, PDFs. I have all the copies.
I have all the copies too.
Yeah.
You can email them to me if you want to.
Okay.
Do you want me to email them, Kathy?
Yeah, you do right now. Okay, he's going to go email them right now. That's weird. Yeah, he uploaded them to the plot plan, he said, but.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that those get.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it.
Recognized and included in the public record.
I appreciate it.
And that's one of the things that we look at closely. If you're going closer to a lot line to make sure that the neighbors who are most impacted are. In support.
Yes.
And, okay, I know Kathy, you're probably looking at that. Something to look at for us also to consider is the side elevation facing the neighbor to the right as you're looking at the house. So it would be. Is it?
Long, the long driveway shot?
I think it's, it's drawing A dash 2.2. Is that what you're?
I haven't found it yet. So. I haven't found it yet, so it'd be.
The one you mean now?
I want to see what the neighbor would be looking at when they're looking at the side of the, the new addition. We have that in our.
You mean like a picture picture or?
No, it, it, it would be a, um, it would be one of the architectural drawings because it's. I think if the, uh, there's.
It's the, it's the other one, the one that you just showed is the opposite side, the chimney is to the, is on the other side of the, uh, the construct. So then the chimney is. As you face the house.
Is that what, um, and maybe the applicant can confirm for us. I think trying, it's not, I think that's the far side away from the closer neighbor. Okay, scroll down just a little bit, that, nope, right there, so the bottom right hand corner, that elevation four. Is that what the, the side that the neighbor would see?
Yes. Yeah. And those letters were sent Kathy.
Okay.
Oh, and I get it, I think there's, there's a little bit of depth perception issue looking at the drawing, but the bump out in the back. That, that's already, that's existing.
Yeah.
And that's on the far other end of the house, it's not.
Yeah, that's something, I know, it looks like it in the drawing, yeah, it's the far, it's the chimney side.
Got it.
Towards my other neighbor. I know, it looks like it's right there, yeah, that was existing.
And then the roof line of the new addition, actually, it's, this looks like it's. Two stories in the front and then it tapers off in the back, is that correct?
It, so this is all still, you know, early in the, in the designs, because we didn't want to look like a, a giant box, because right now it's all attic up there. So she was kind of playing around with it, but, um. So again, it is still early, but that's why she was, we're doing different things with the front, like the, um, like the farmer's porch there, trying to. Off set, trying to make it a little bit, uh, add a little dimension or something on the front or. You know, the little roof above the, um, the garage, just trying to. Play around with it, but we're gonna, we're gonna be going back to a lot to, to work on this, this is very early. But again, this was, we just wanted to see if we even had that ability to gain that extra four point nine feet. Or if that was off the table, because then we would just stick to, you know, like I said, the, the two car garage, like a larger two car garage and try to. Um, work in those parameters, um, instead.
I think the, um, I understand this is still a work in progress, uh, but the concept of having. Some sort of reduced roof line on the addition, so when you're looking at it from that side, or from the, that side, from the, the neighbor's side. They're not at the same, like a huge big new box. And you don't get the full two, two flights looking at it from the side.
Yeah, yeah, completely understand.
And then the way this is shown, again, it's. The windows are in garage portion rather than in living area upstairs.
Yep.
Something to think about for the board is both a setback, which is sort of the first question. And then typically we're approving, we're approving to a set of plans. And since these are preliminary. I don't know if you would need to sort of give, if the, the, if the votes were to go in favor of approving this. Make it contingent or I guess, continue it until there were. Plans, because if we approve this set of plans, then that's what would be, that would be the scope of your variance that would then get recorded. And it would be building to these sets of plans and you would either, you could come back for an amendment perhaps. Or keep it open until the plans were finalized, again, if, if the setback is, is approved. Thoughts from, thoughts from my board here?
Yeah, because my question is whether we're approving a concept or we're approving plans and it seems like the plans are. Conceptual right now.
Right, yeah, that, so that, exactly, because we, we approve plans and if. I mean, if you want to take a straw poll on, would a setback variance be granted for something like this? Then we can easily do that, but I think if, if you're going to go, if you're still working on these and want to go change them. It may put you in, in an awkward position if we say, yes, you know, if we all say, great, this is perfect, you may build per these plans. And then you change them and we want to get your building permit. And you're building something different than you wouldn't, than our approval or our variance wouldn't.
Was my, um, understanding when I first talked about the plans and I spoke to you Kathy about. When I submitted these, if there was, if there was any small amendments, I don't mean small, I don't mean like we're gonna. Totally scrap the whole idea and it's gonna look entirely different, uh, but if there was any changes at all, like. Again, small amendments to the exterior, if that was okay, and the answer was yes. So I just want to make sure, because that's why, you know, we went forward with this, um, this process, because it was mainly about. Can we expand to this setback, can we reach, you know. Three car garage for those dimensions and gain that extra, you know, just under five feet. That was really, you know, what was in question, I said, and with that being said, if we made any changes. Or went below the setback, like we didn't need the five feet, we only went two, whatever it was. The answer was yes, that I was given, so I just want to make sure, because when I talk about early stages, I don't mean like. We're gonna scrap the whole idea and do something entirely different, I just mean small changes like. You know, something that just might make it look less, I don't know, massive, like just, just something like minor, I don't mean anything. Do you know what I mean, I maybe, I don't know, gave off the wrong impression, but I did ask this. I remember I asked, I mean Kathy, I spoke to you like several times, because I didn't know, trying to understand the whole process, but, um. But again, it was my understanding that that was our right to make, if I did, there was small amendments to the, um, exterior.
So if there are minor modifications, I don't think, I would not have an issue with those. And, um, if there are minor modifications, you can come in front of the board for a approval of a minor modification. It doesn't require renotice to the public, it's just something that we can do as an administrative matter. Um, we are all for you doing things that make things even more aesthetically pleasing. But what we're, what we wouldn't want to see is if we approve this set of plans and then. There was a two full stories on the garage, I mean, the, the roof line going up to and over, because that would be. We look at the whole mass thing, we look at, at the architectural components of it. So it's not built anything within twenty feet, it's, you may build this. And again, minor modifications are not an issue. Thing, if you went. Needed less space, again, not an issue, um, but we do approve to a set of plans presented to us. Okay. So I think it's up to you a bit to tell us how far you are in your design and if you really think this is what you want us. The board to consider approving, um, with potential minor modifications, or if you think. You're doing a different design, then we really should look at that.
And for, for that purpose, I think, you know, I would reference A dash two point two, because I think that that gives that, um. Uh, side view that, um. This plot was discussing, uh, the one that's on the screen now is the, all four of those images are the existing. So you get that view in the bottom right hand corner. Of X two, two point one, that's kind of what your neighbor sees, right? Except for the, the build out, that entire, that's all coming towards, I'm assuming again, it's nine Kings Row. But the elevation and, and perspective that's provided on the proposed exterior elevation. Under drawing A dash two point two. Kind of shows what that wall is gonna look like, and now it's gonna be two stories with four windows and a sloping. A sloping, um, roof that while it will be coming down from the peak towards. Eleven, so, right, that, you just missed it, it's not, it's the one before that, right?
Bob, you're, you're absolutely right, that was, those, those were existing conditions, not proposed and.
Right, so not the, yeah, there's, there's, there's a, there's a, this is it, so that's what your neighbor's gonna see. Not only is your neighbor gonna see that, but it's gonna be closer, that's kind of the idea for them, but. I can't tell you what distance their house is from your property, from the property line either, so it's kind of, and I, I think. Now that the, um, the neighbors, um, comments were submitted, do we have anything from in particular nine? And did, did nine Kings Row, uh, have they seen the plan, kind of question, which is always. Relevant.
Yeah, we shared our plans with all of our neighbors and I think Kathy, did those come through, okay?
Uh, yes, I got a.
Okay, yeah, there should be four, so it was from both the neighbors to the left and right of us, um. The ones that's directly affecting the Smiths and then LaCoco's on the other side of us and then the two across the street, so we did, we shared everything with them.
Thirteen, I have one, um, we are Tim and Tia Smith, residents of nine Kings Row. We want to express our complete support of our Director Butter neighbors. Christopher Renee for their garage expansion, we moved in the neighborhood almost four years ago and we have loved being neighbors to Christopher Renee. Their constant care of their home shows tremendously and the attention to detail of everything they do. Makes living next to them a joy, the love of their home and family always shows. Which is why we are excited for their project that will help with their growing family. We support everything they would like to do a hundred percent and are happy to speak with any board members if needed. We hope the ZBA approves the Barnes variance request.
Very helpful, and that was from the, the residents of number nine Kathy, correct?
That was nine, I can also read thirteen.
If you would, thank you.
Your members of the North Reading Zone Board, our names are Dominic, Sarah and LaCoco, residents of thirteen Kings Row, North Reading for nineteen years. We are writing to you in support of our Director Butters neighbors, Christopher Renee Bond. Our understanding is they are requesting variance to construct a garage expansion on their property. The Barnes have moved into the house next door two months, eight years ago, they have been fantastic neighbors. They keep their home to property impeccable, they constantly care for their home and have beautified their landscape and home front. Their constant attention and improvement has made living next to them an absolute pleasure. Our understanding is the Barnes hope to expand their family of five with additional children. Having a variance to extend their existing garage will help them manage their growing family. We one hundred percent support this and are happy to speak directly with any board member to assist in this process. Feel free to reach out to us with any questions or concerns, if we reach that. We hope the board does approve the Barnes request for sincere Dominic and Sarah LaCoco. Annette and Mark Shilly from fourteen Kings Row. My husband and I are Mark and Annette Shilly and I have been residents of North Reading since two thousand. We have lived at fourteen Kings Row the entire time, which will be twenty-two years in April. We are writing this letter to the North Reading ZBA in support of our neighbors Christopher and Renee Bond. Who live across from us at eleven Kings Row, we are in complete support of the variance they are requesting for their garage expansion. Chris and Renee have been wonderful neighbors as well as loving and involved parents. They have meticulously cared for their property since moving in eight years ago. Their hope to expand their garage will not only add value to the neighborhood, but will important, important help in terms of their growing family. We truly hope the board will approve their variance request. Feel free to call us, sincerely Mark and Annette Shilly. And one more from twelve Kings Row. Dear members of North Reading zoning board, we are Frank and Lisa Trichetta. Residents of twelve Kings Row, we have been North Reading residents for twenty-three years. We are writing to the ZBA to give our full support of the variance requested by our neighbors Christopher and Renee Bond for their garage expansion. Since moving here eight years ago, they have kept their home in pristine condition and have been a wonderful addition to the neighborhood. The garage expansion will help support their growing family and we support them in any way possible. We truly hope the board approves their request, if anyone has any questions, please reach out to us. Thank you, Frank and Lisa, Lisa Trichella.
Thank you Kathy.
And I'll put the, I'll attempt to do all of your application. You want me to put the, um, map up again?
Uh, I, I think. I think, I, I don't know about the rest of the board, but I think I'm, I'm pretty, pretty. I've got a pretty good, a, a strong idea of what the, uh, proposed plan would be. Um, and once again, I'll, I'll defer to, uh, Jennifer, because it sounds as if, while if. The, the grant or the approval of this variance request. It sounds as, uh. The applicant is trying to avoid trying to get into something that. Won't go further, um. We could do a straw, but I don't even know if that's really necessary or appropriate in this matter, uh, that. It doesn't sound as if the final design and construction will be substantially different from the rendered drawings that we've seen today. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
So I think it, as we consider the, um, application, I think we can just simply rely on that. And the, the drawing submitted, and while it's true that. There might be some changes, um, I don't think they're going to be anything. Different than what we've discussed here, and while I'll acknowledge that the community planning asked about the true hardship. Trying to be addressed by the applicant, um, and again, it's just. My suspicion that they're wondering, why do you need three cars instead of two car garage or a bigger car garage? And that's, that comes with some merit. Uh, I think the point being made by the most affected and direct. Uh, party, that being, uh, the residents at nine Kings Row, um, have endorsed. The application, and I think in all fairness, that should be noted.
Agreed, agreed, and so I would say, and I, I will leave it to the, the three of you to, um, make motions and, and. Decide as you, as you see fit, uh, but if to, if this is approved. Then I would just advise the applicant, if you make anything, want to make anything other than a minor changes to the plant. And just come back in front of us for us to take a look at that, and if it's just minor ones. Rated, if it's, if we can't really tell. Then. That's. Can be, you know, we don't need to hear about it, um, but if you're making any substantial changes, then you would just. You would want to come back to the board, so if there's ever something down the road that what you approved for matches what was actually constructed.
Of course.
And to that point, um, just so that's a very clear understanding, if it's, you know, that we're talking small changes, not substantial. So, um. And just so there's no misunderstanding, if, you know, a lot of, this will still go to. The ongoing overview and purview of the building inspector, uh, even after the grant of permit. Uh, to check on the project and make sure that it's staying within, uh, that which is submitted, and that's true for everybody who submits. Uh, that which is submitted, and that's true for everybody who submits, uh, not just, uh, in this case. For the bonds. So I'll move to close the public hearing. Can I get a second?
I'm Maria Lockhart, second that.
Thank you. Close the public hearing, uh, would any, any board member like to make a motion on the submitted application?
I'd, I'd like to make a motion. On the petition of Christopher Bond, eleven Kings Row, North Reading, Mass, map sixty-six, parcel sixteen. For a five foot variance from the front yard setback. For fortune setback requirements per the dimension and density regulations of the North Reading bylaws. The, um, voting for a five foot variance from the northerly side. Setback to allow construction of an attached three car garage. Um, as presented this evening. In accordance with the plan submitted to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Raguchi. And to that point, uh, again, it's not to exceed the five foot grant. If in the event that you don't need that, that's obviously within a purview. However, if it does turn out that you think after final draw that it might need to be. Uh, I'd strongly urge the applicant to, uh, reapply in the, in the event that the. Application is granted tonight. Can, uh, is there a second on Mr. Raguchi's motion?
I'm Maria Lockhart, second that motion.
Thank you for the second. Call the vote, all in favor of the, uh, the variance application.
Yeah, Vincent Raguchi, aye.
Maria Lockhart, aye.
Uh, Bob Brain, aye. Uh, thank you, board members. So attended to the grant of the, uh. The setback variance approval. Again, there's a twenty day appeal period, after which you can receive a copy of it. I think it gives you, uh, granted, an ability to go forward with your more substantial plan and construction. Based, um. And again, um, I don't think there's anything more, more, but do, again, uh, keep us. Appraised if there is a change in any of the, uh, of the construction or the, um, the development.
Yes. And once you do, once you do get the original variance, you do need to record that with the registry.
Okay. Absolutely.
All right.
Did you want to address the shed or do you want to?
Yes. There was some, after submission of the, uh.
So the, um.
Yeah, please Kathy, I think you can speak to it directly.
So Jerry said that initially he said he would want it moved, but he say this afternoon that if the. They could keep the shed there, but maybe you should give them a variance for it. Since the neighbors have lived with it this long.
Um, yeah, I don't, we can't act on that because it wasn't part of the hearing.
To this point, Mr. and Mrs. Bond, I think that the cleanest way to manage this, uh, it's. It's been raised by the town inspector that the shed that's now existing, it won't be changed in any way with the new construction. Um, it's never granted any variant for its placement as close to the property line as it is. To avoid being cited for this, I think, uh, the prudent thing to do is to. Submit an application, even though the property, the, the structure is in place to seek a variance grant. Um, for it, otherwise, or look into moving it.
Or you, or you could pull it off the lot line. Sheds are supposed to be ten feet off the lot line.
Okay, so you said submit, um, submit an application for it?
Or just move it.
Yeah, I would, okay, that would probably be your. Depends if you get a site, if you can, if you get an enforcement notice from the building inspector. You will need to move it. I don't know if he's going that direction or not. Just FYI.
Okay, and this is Jerry I would speak to, is that right?
Maybe you should just wait to see if you get a notice and if you get a notice, then you should just apply for variance.
Apply for a variance, okay.
After, if you get a notice from Jerry.
Okay, yeah. Okay, I don't think it's like a rush.
Right, so let's, in the event you get a notice. Then you might want to address it. You could address it in one of two ways, could apply for a variance, or you could move the shed. Or you could try to wait him out, but I, you know, um, that's probably not the most prudent thing. And keep in mind that you will be on site with the development of the, the new construction. So it's kind of an interesting. Situation, but again, that's something for, uh, for your consideration as, as much as it is.
Okay, I see it on the, all right, it's, it's one point six feet from, from the sideline. Yeah, I got you.
Okay, so just. If anything comes in and then submit an application for a variance at that, we should receive.
Well, but we're not gonna, we're not, we're not going to decide on this one. It's not in front of us for now. See how this one transpires.
Okay.
I don't think, I don't know the Latin for the heads up. I think it's just kind of one of those things where you gotta kind of wait and see. But keep it in mind that.
Friendly reminder.
It's, it's, it's been noted, but it's not part of tonight's.
Okay, okay. If it's something that you can easily move or locate, I don't know anything about the construction of this.
It'll be in the middle of the lawn. It's on it, well. We first moved in, yeah, we, we, I mean, most everybody in the neighborhood, they're all against the fence. And we didn't know much of, uh, all the rules and everything, but we did go to the town and I. Spoke to a gentleman there, Albert Salvo, or Salvo, DeSalvo? I don't know if he's still at the town, but that's why I spoke with that, um, okay things. He had come out to the property. And this was back a few months before COVID. At any rate, um, because I think everything else, all the other sentences I, from my understanding is all, okay, it's just the sides. I know, it'd be in the middle of our papers. And that wouldn't be something, but, um, okay, so we'll.
I think it's, I think the way we should just leave it tonight for the board and for your own benefit is just to, um, keep it in mind that.
Okay.
Has been, and.
Sure.
You, when, when and if that matter, if it does find its way to you. Just keep in mind that it's, at that time it would be best to address it.
Okay. And this is through the same process we would go through? Like this evening, this? Where's the similar, yeah, it's just like this. Okay, okay.
Yeah. But, uh, so we're not looking to get ahead of ourselves. We just, it was brought to our attention and, and mail. Uh, notes from Jerry with regard to the layout and the placement, that's all.
Okay.
Right. That's it for this evening.
All right, thank you.
You did it.
Good luck, thank you.
Thank you.
Construction.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all your time very much. We're excited.
Right, best luck.
Thank you.
So with, returning back to the agenda, um, take note that, um. A matter for a special permit for three forty Main Street. The applicant has asked. Just to say to continue that to our April meeting, which. While we're at this stage, we should.
Excuse me.
Discuss and confirm a date for the April, um, meeting.
He actually asked for a two month extension.
Fair enough, thank you.
There is an applicant coming in to our meeting in April who may be a tenant there. And I think he probably wants to see how that pans out.
So, um. To the board. Perspective, uh, meeting date for our April. I take note that, uh, school vacation for public schools is the week of. Uh, would be following a Thursday meeting day, the twenty first would be a school vacation week day. I might suggest. April seventh or the fourteenth, but the seventh, um, will avoid any conflict with, um, the religious holidays.
I have a conflict on the fourteenth.
Looks like the seventh.
I mean, I'm sorry, on the seven.
Okay.
Fourteenth is okay with me. I think I can do the fourteenth as well.
I should be able to do the fourteen.
Kathy, what did you say? What, what are we looking at on our agenda for the fourteenth thus far?
Um, I believe I have two more home occupation, special permits and, um. The special use for three forty main, uh, he wants to do a detail. And repair shop.
But he's looking to go to May, wasn't he?
Yes. But no, no, that's, the tenant wants to come in in April. He's already filed. But, um. Jose wants to go to May.
So what does he want to do in May if he already has a tenant coming in, in April?
I think he's probably going to withdraw in May.
I'm sorry, Kathy, I'm having real bad audio with you. It's, you're saying what?
He probably wants to withdraw in May.
Okay. Gotcha. So if his tenant gets approved, he doesn't.
Right.
Doesn't CS, okay, perfect.
And there's another one for, um. Uh, a variance for lighting off of Park Street. Uh, one seventy-two, it's where, it's after the library on the left. So that's probably four, five there.
And before the plaza. So I mean, which way you're heading? I mean, because after the library is the town common.
So the other way, the other way.
Right, there's a small business.
Yeah, like a key.
Located right on the, the neighboring property. Then after that, there's a couple of residences and then you go down even further and there's. Right, uh, has, has there been any submission?
Um, he has.
Did they approach you? Did ask about it?
He filed on the website. He hasn't supplied any supporting documents though, that I can share with you.
Okay. Well, that all sounds just lovely.
Will we be surprised, will we be surprised if Ms. Platt's driving that night too?
She wouldn't let me, you wouldn't let me in Kathy, I tried a dozen times.
Oh, I didn't see you. I saw your picture.
Yeah, and it was me. I kept, it's, I kept trying to unmute and it said the administrator would not unmute, allow applicants to unmute without permission. I only had one, I mean, I could only use so many hands and drop it at the same time, so. But you guys were phenomenal, all of you. No, I, no, I do not need to be here, so.
All right, just for the, for the purpose of the agenda and closing the meeting, um, I didn't get the minutes from March, uh, from the February tenth meeting. Didn't have a chance to review them, so, uh, could I, I'd like to. As an administrative matter, move the, uh, approval of the, um, minutes from our February tenth meeting to our next meeting. That's my, uh, all in favor of, of that continuance, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, Barbara, uh, thank you, uh, and, um.
Did we decide on the fourteenth? Is that a good?
Right, so, uh, so, uh, Vince, you had, so we're gonna go, uh, April fourteenth, the next meeting.
That's fine, great.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, guys, well done. Just another phenomenal meeting by the North Reading zoning board of appeals. Let's see it. Thank you, thank you all for doing, doing so much. You guys are amazing. It's nice to have this board here. So, you guys are awesome.
The, the last thought of this, it's, it's interesting that you have executive session and then, uh, that's where the conversation ends. You know, for purposes. So.
Yes. Yep. So.
Anybody like to move to close?
To adjourn.
Second, uh, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you all very much for your patience and courtesy. Enjoy your, um, rest of your evening and the weekend. Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you Kathy for finally letting Jennifer in.
Thanks, Cap.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, everyone. Have a great night. Thanks so much.